Welcome everybody to the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting for the month of November 2021. We're going to begin with a moment of silence followed by Mr. Benton. Please stand.
If you face the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now, we have approval of the meeting agenda. Board members, you have a copy of the agenda. Is any corrections? Can we have a motion to approve?
To move.
The agenda has...
Mr. Lemon?
Sir?
I would like to pull something from consent. Would you like me to do that now or just wait till we get to consent?
You can do it now.
Okay. I would like to pull the dress code for one addition to it. To further define the headgear and to make sure that we're not allowing any headgear that is concealing the identity or the face of students. So, we'll discuss it in action.
So, which item is that?
It's number four in consent and we'll just move it to...
Number eight.
Number eight on action.
We need to reread that, Mr. Berger, after it's discussed again tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tori can pull it up on the computer.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Robson, if you will restate the motion to approve the agenda with that change?
Yes, sir. I will move to do so with that modification of number four.
You have a second. Mr. Robson makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Berger. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes and the meeting agenda is approved. We have public address next.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I'm reading from Board of Education Policy 2310. Says that presentations will be limited to three minutes per person or three minutes per organization. Discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential may not be discussed in open forum setting. The chairman will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and rule the speaker out of order if necessary. Insofar as the three minutes, towards the end of the three minutes, when there's 15 seconds left, I will let the speaker know that there's 15 seconds left. So, the first speaker, I believe, is Louis Harmoni. Mr. Harmoni?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I might talk about how I'm going to do a series of lectures leading to months and months down the road until we only get three minutes. Soul, classical education, Constitution, who do you work for, woke racism, critical race theory, civics, and no, this is not jeopardy. That's why I was laughing about that. Stop laughing. But tonight, the subject is the soul. Very important subject. Soul is a living being like God and is a piece of God. Soul, soul's destiny is partly in your hands as educators. You are the maker and like God, you create a soul in your own image as educators. Will this soul that you create be shining light to the world or will it be dark and lost like Satan, Stalin, Hitler, Marx? Body is not a living being, a living thing. Soul gives life to the body. Once the body dies, the soul separates from the body, the body goes back to God. The soul returns to God, we're separated from God forever. That is why your job is so important as educators. So, that finishes my speech. What I wanted to do is talk a minute or less about a dream I had about the soul. I had about 10 years ago, maybe eight years ago, a dream that I went to hell. And when I got there, I felt emotional pain, physical pain, spiritual pain because God isn't in hell. And I was in tremendous pain. It wasn't the kind of pain that you experience in Revelation, but it was tremendous. And I said, man, this is good, buddy. You're never going to get out of here. And I heard a word say, you want to get out of here? And I said, yes. So, after that, I said, yes. Next word came, said, will you forget? And I said, yes. And as soon as I said, yes, I woke up. And I cried and was shaking like I was not... For 20 minutes. Well, I tried, you know, grabbing, trying to figure out what was going on, and I couldn't talk, couldn't do anything. So, that's my story about the soul. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Lou. Lou, good luck tonight.
Next speaker is Brian Starn. Mr. Starn?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Starn. I have three children that brought the county school. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of parents, students, who voted to ignore the tools to wear or not to wear masks. Initially, you voted to allow vaccinated staff not to wear masks, but everyone else was required to wear masks. After a few days of backlash, you voted to mandate masks for all. I ask you, what did the survey before school started show? Did it show that parents wanted to choose or did it show that teachers should be unmasked if they're vaccinated or did it show everyone should wear a mask regardless? What was the percentages for the three questions asked about the masks? Is this available for us to look at? Can we see what the parents spoke about, what their thoughts were on this? After speaking to students and parents alike, I found that everyone I spoke to opted for parent choice. Under Policy Code 1310-4002, number five states involving parents, guardians, and school decisions that affect children and families clearly have taken away the parent's decision on this. Number eight, promotion of student health awareness. Does taking away our kids' ability to breathe freely sound like health awareness? Policy 6140, student wellness states, the board is committed to promoting a school environment that promotes student wellness, proper nutrition, nutrition education, and regular physical activity as part of the total learning experience. I ask again, how is taking away the ability to breathe freely student wellness? 6104A states, the board will maintain a school health advisory council composed of the local community, which must include the board, school staff, school food service, excuse me, school food service, phys ed staff, school health staff, students, parents, and the public. Key words there are students, parents, and the public. Who are the people in this council and what did they provide for this mandate? Policy Code 4316, student dress and appearance, number four, thirty states, the board prohibits clothing that endangers the health and safety of students. So, how is covering our airways for eight hours a day healthy for our children? All these policies clearly show that your mandate for masks violates the parent's right to choose what's in our children's best interest with regards to their health. Key word is our children, not yours, ours. Four individuals are making decisions for thousands of children against the wishes of the parents. My understanding is that four vote for, one against. Policy Code 4230, communicable diseases, Section B states, in order to prevent the spread of communicable diseases, school systems officials, excuse me, school system officials shall distribute guidelines for necessary health and safety. Key word here is guidelines, not mandates. 4230F, education, school attendance for students with communicable diseases other than AIDS, HIV, or Hep D states, decisions regarding the educational status of students with...
Mr. Starn, you're down to 15 seconds.
...will be made on a case-by-case basis with input from the students, healthcare provider, public health, and the school nurse. Instead of following school policy, mandate all children be treated as sick or beaten from school and extra...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Board salute. Mr. Seaman?
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
It's time again to give a little salute to some of our dedicated staff inside Brunswick County Schools. So, we wrapped up the district employee of the year surprises and we wanted to give one more BCS shout-out to the final two district award recipients. So, first up, Ms. Brozey. If you would come join us real quick. So, this was a unique surprise that took place. Ms. Brozey has continued and is continuing her growth inside the district and has joined the Human Resources Office as Deputy Director. But before the switch, on final day, as Assistant Principal of South Brunswick High School, she snuck in to present her with the 2021 Brunswick County Schools Assistant Principal of the Year honors for everything that she has done as an Assistant Principal. And while you have switched positions, you still get that honor all year long. Two samples from her coworkers' nominations that we want to read for you. Two omitted, by the way. Quote, "I try my best every day to portray the same qualities as her because if everyone were more like her, then there would never be any complaining or problems that couldn't be handled." And then this one, I had to pick this one up because it puts a smile on your face every time you read it. It says, "Don't let her size fool you." Ms. Brozey is a force. She stands her ground always on the side of the student while supporting the staff. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2021 Brunswick County Schools Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Natalie Brozey, and we are blessed now to have such a dedicated person inside central services servicing the entire district as a whole. Thank you so much, Ms. Brozey. Now, this Janice Ball, I see, right there, Ms. Ball of Cedar Grove Middle School. Thousands of folks have already seen the video of her surprise. You can find it on the Brunswick County Schools Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube pages. It is quite entertaining if you haven't seen it yet. But what was not in the video were some of the kind words from her coworkers and we would like to share a few of them with you this evening because we didn't share them with you during the surprise. Quote, "Ms. Janice is simply amazing. For me as a teacher, she is my superwoman. She is absolutely the most selfless person I know." This one, next quote, in reference to Hurricane Florence and the aftermath. "She worked the shelter at West Brunswick High School for 13 days straight, 24 hours each day, completing, after completing that task, she jumped right back into her duties at Cedar Grove." And then this, when she is thanked, she says that she is just doing her job. As a supervisor, she sets a stellar example. I never see her sitting down. She rarely eats lunch. You eat lunch, girl? She rarely eats lunch. She works alongside her crew all day, every day, and when they stop for lunch, she continues working. She works athletic events, literacy nights, the shelter, and Saturday school, and she drives buses when needed. She does all of this with a smile on her face and a cheerful, joyous disposition. Ladies and gentlemen, your 2021 Operational Support Employee of the Year for Brunswick County Schools, Ms. Janice Ball. And finally, Ms. Yana Bowie, if you would come join us. So, Ms. Bowie, you may recall has been around for a while. She is a master at helping us with our exceptional children's services. She has, is now moved outside of the school system just by location. She's over at Novartis Health with, as a project search educator in the community classroom. What she's doing is getting some of our students prepared for the next chapter. You want to step up and tell us real quick kind of some of the things that go on? Just a second. Over at Project Search.
Hi. Project Search is an internship program for children with developmental disabilities. They rotate through three different internships with high school jobs at Novartis. And it's been a successful year. We have three currently. Last year, we had five. After the program, every one of the employees too received jobs at Novartis.
Ladies and gentlemen, your 2021, 2022 Brunswick County Schools Exceptional Children's Teacher of Excellence, excellence, Ms. Yana Bowie. We have these special guests amongst us as well, a little younger. We want to take a moment to recognize these folks for attending. This is Boy Scout Unit 262 joining us for a special occasion. The scouts are trying to earn their merit badge and with your help, they can achieve it. The merit badge requires the boys to attend a government meeting. So, what better meeting to choose than the school board because it directly affects them? The scouts will listen to the meeting. They're going to pick the topic that y'all discussed, reflect on the conversations and how it's resolved. After the meeting, they're hoping to talk with a couple of you for a short interview. The group has decided the issue they would like to ask you one question about each is bathroom safety in the schools. So, Boy Scout Unit 262, welcome to the November 2nd Board of Education meeting. We appreciate you guys joining us and we hope that you get something out of this. Thank you very much.
We now have our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Bestie O'Hara, to do her presentation.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Good afternoon.
Good, good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm going to start out with one of the goals that I know the board has, which is improving our middle school math scores. So, I want to share some positive news about what our middle school math department is doing and the growth that we are seeing amongst the middle school math department. First of all, and this is what Dr. Allison and I came up with it. So, over 90% of our math teachers are aligned to the district pacing guide. We are providing support where staffing changes have hindered pacing. So, those, maybe we've lost a teacher in a certain position. We are making sure that we're giving support to make sure that they get back on pace with the guidelines, with the pacing guidelines. All the Go Math materials, the Go Math textbooks have finally arrived and they are available for grade level. They've been distributed to each school and they also include the differentiated text for accelerated learners and also our ELL learners. We also have 757 students receiving Tier Two instruction, which is through our Math 180 program. We started that last year and we decided to implement it again this year and we're having renewed success with that. We have 576 of those students in the Course One level and we have 181 in the Course Two level. Also, of our 1,108 eighth graders, 173 are enrolled in the Math One High School Level class and that's 16% of our eighth graders. Also, I'm going to talk about some of our data with our pre and post tests. So, the average percentage increase between our, either our first units that we just got finished teaching, for sixth grade, there was an increase, a 49.3% increase from their pretest to their post test. That's, that was based on our last post test, so I guess they've given two so far. 62% of our sixth graders are proficient on their tested standards. So, that's excellent. We're moving in the right direction. Also, for grade seven, there was a 45.6% increase from their pretest to their post test. Wait for this one, and I'm honored for this one because I'm an eighth grade math teacher. Eighth grade had a 103% increase from their pretest scores to their post test scores. And on average, eighth graders doubled their pretest to their post test score. So, that's amazing improvement and growth that we're looking to see. Also, nine of the 29 teachers are already reaching major growth goals after quarter one for that Math 180 intervention, which is awesome. Also, we have started implementing, we started this last year, but we use an IXL computer-based program. We're releasing a lot of growth with that. It's a great supplemental resource that the teachers are using. We had a PD, a math PD, and we talked about IXL and how we were using it. Some teachers still need some support in that, so I think that somewhere at the math department, we can talk about how to offer support to those math teachers that still need help with it. But those that are implementing it are noticing that students can track their own data. Teachers can also track the growth and proficiency. And those are the two words that we're really talking about this year with our students is growth, but not just that growth piece. We now need to get to that proficiency. And the students need to hear that language, so we're really trying to make sure that we use those words with our students. And then also, the IXL aligns with the North County State standards and I think that's very important. And then also, we just started November 1st, the North County Check-In One window just opened and that goes through the 12th. So, we're excited to see the comparisons from this data to last year's data and see what growth that we have. Is there anything, any questions about the math?
Yes, I have a question. The board hears periodically complaints from the teachers about the amount of testing they're asked to do. And I know I come from yesteryear in the old school, but what I remember about math class was we had a test every Friday. So, that amounted to about 36 tests a year and the teachers generally took it home and brought it back on Monday, graded, and that kind of thing. Mathematics today, I'm trying to check in what you're being asked to do test-wise. I think you're being asked to do unit tests, pre and post?
Yes. So, at the end of last year, math teachers could sign up to be on the developmental curriculum board to help like reorganize it and just come up with, not curriculum, but just to look at the pacing and see if we could revamp it a little bit. And so, we did that. And one of the things we decided to do was to make sure that the unit tests were the same across the board. So, we created those unit tests, so every school, every grade level used the same one so that we could compare data and talk about the data.
Right.
So, not every school should come up with their own test and then they're giving one after every little mini unit.
Okay.
At the end of every unit and that unit aligns with our NC check-ins.
So, there's seven units. Am I correct about that?
I think it's different for...
Different at each grade level.
It's based on the Go Math, so we also align it to our Go Math textbooks. So, that's why we had to realign the pacing guide so it matched our Go Math textbooks and then we also set up our unit test with this.
So, it's somewhere in the range of seven?
It's about seven on average.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I'm trying to get control of how much is being required. Also, three check-ins and three, I want to call it a midterm check-in. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we did a pre EOG release just to collect data, you know, on the beginning one. And then we do a mid-year one just to see what growth they're having.
Yeah.
And then obviously, we'll use the end of their EOG, the actual EOG, to really assess that growth from the beginning, the middle, and the end. So, we have those three as well that we're doing. And then obviously, the three check-ins and then the unit assessment.
Okay, so, other than what the test state requires at the end of the year with EOCs, those are the required tests, which amounts to 13 for the year.
Yes, I have.
So...
13 standardized tests.
Well, yes.
Yes.
Well, is the pre and post on a unit test standardized?
Yes, I mean, they align with our standards.
Okay.
They are created based on the standards that we have taught for that...
So, you as an example, how much testing do you do?
Well...
Other than that?
Well, we constantly formatively assess every day. But me personally, I do a little mini quiz at least once a week just based on the standard that I've taught that week, just to see what they're getting. But I mean, it doesn't have to be a 10 or 20 question quiz, it's just something small.
Like we used to do, yeah.
Yes. So, I think it's really different for every teacher, but I wouldn't call those summative, but just formative ones, just to see who's getting it, if I have to reteach something, if I can move on from that standard. But I think that's just based on...
So, as an expert teacher, and I know you are, do you think you've been being asked to do too much testing?
I think in the beginning of the year, it was a little much at first just because you're trying to start the school year and then... In the beginning, I would say yes. I'm going to be honest, if that's okay.
That's what he wants you to do.
But now, now that because, now that our students were really focusing on where it's growth and proficiency, if they can see the growth from their pretest to their post test, then they're being accountable for that. Before, I wasn't a believer in pretests. I just thought it was an extra test just to give it to them. But now that we're seeing the data and they're seeing the data specifically, then I'm happy. You know what I'm saying? So, for me, I see the importance of it and I think it's good because my other co-teacher, not co-teacher, but my other eighth grade math teacher, we can actually share that data with one another and we can see which standards are we missing and things like that. So, I think there's relevance in it. I think sometimes, I think it could just be that we're giving it here in the beginning, the one in the middle, but I also see the relevance in that as well because you can see the growth and get them ready for that final...
With the other board members agreeing, I would like, and they can say whether they agree with me or not, if you would talk to the TAC group about this conversation and what the general consensus is about that, plus a general consensus about paperwork, about what's being required centrally that could be shaved down. And if you guys can identify things that you feel like are unnecessary, we can pass that on to the administration and say, what can we get rid of here?
Right.
And that was the purpose of me coming to the TAC meeting. That way, we could try to work on some of these things.
When you're asking about testing, I'm strictly speaking about middle school math.
Right, I understand.
I can't give my opinion on elementary schools or on high schools. But in the TAC meeting, I did hear that elementary students are being tested quite a bit. But I...
Yeah.
Just what they draw.
Yeah, Ms. Kay...
Do you mind to address that with the elementary?
The Kay...
So, but I can only speak on behalf of middle school math.
So, we did a follow-up survey after the last TAC meeting and then have it split by K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. And then I'm working through that process. Then by each grade span because they're different at each level. And we asked five different questions essentially. It came out of TAC.
Yes.
Well, I know you attend those meetings, I believe, Ms. White. Can we come up with the...
Do you have a list of all the tests that are being...
Yes, and it's...
You're talking about standardized tests, ones that have to be performed...
Yeah.
...in the school setting that are required.
And...
I think also what he's saying too is just like streamlining all paperwork?
Yeah, yeah.
Like throughout any subject area, not redundancy or, you know, trying to streamline what, not being repetitive in what you're filling out as far as paperwork.
And I think we're getting there with certain paperwork. So, for example, we have the at-risk forms and those come from, I believe, the state.
They do.
And so, they're finally digitalized, which is great. So, when they start in...
And, you know, elementary, and then they come to sixth grade and then seventh, eighth, at least the basic data is filled out and they should be being filled out. And so, we're starting to see some of that. But the issue that arise this year is that, you know, we're using data from last school year during a COVID year and we're using those test scores. So, we have a lot of students that are at risk. So, that is a lot of paperwork that needs to fill out and it is tedious. I mean, we spent our whole planning today doing at-risk forms and we don't, and I helped another teacher and we didn't even get half of the students done. So, yes, it's important, but it's a lot of paperwork. So, then that planning time where we should be doing lesson plans and talking with our, you know, math colleague about where we're going next and grading, it's not getting done because we're doing so much extra paperwork.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it's not important, but what is more important? Do you want us to put that time into our lesson plans and getting our math scores up or am I supposed to be filling in a student ID? up, or am I supposed to be filling in a student ID number, a phone number, and last year's not proficient scores? You know what I mean? So what's the balance? And that's where I think teachers are really overwhelmed with, is us teaching math, teaching our content is the most important, but from the state, it's not. It's do this, do this, and do this. And so we really have to figure out the balance. Sorry, I'm just passionate about that.
No, 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 we want to hear that, because do we have any leeway on streamlining those forms at all?
They are streamlined. It's just going to be a process, because they just became digitalized, and so we're getting the data in there. So when these move up to the high school, and hopefully they all won't move up, we want to get them off these at-risk plans. Most of that information should be put in there. But before, they were paper. Now they're digitalized, but it's just going to take time to get them there. And this is one of those reasons why this year is so stressful to teachers, because we don't have the time to get all that done.
Yeah, that's the reason teachers are so tired and so stressed out.
Not PD days, because we need time to work on this stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, you know what I mean? Because we're, and yes, I like, I do a lot of my job at home, but I have the time to do that. A lot of teachers don't have the time to do that, and that's not required of them. But if they don't do it, then, you know what I mean, it's going to show in their performance.
Right.
Well, I mean, we understand the state requirements.
Yes.
But we don't want you guys to have to
Extra.
do extra stuff through the county that could be streamlined.
Right, and so we'll talk about that, too. I guess what's something we'll add.
And I don't know if each school had somebody who could help you with that, an additional person just to work with teachers in relation to those forms. We're just seeking input of how to relieve you of a lot of this, if possible.
Great idea we could do, maybe not just use the whole TAC committee, but we could take the elementary teacher of the year, and then the high school teacher of the year, and then I'm the middle school teacher of the year, and maybe meet with Molly, and the four of us just talk about what the requirements are at each level and just come up that way. Because sometimes when you get too many voices trying to share, it's going to get overwhelming. So I think the four of us could possibly meet and.
Yeah, we're seeking ways for to help you with that.
We appreciate that.
That's a great idea. Molly, you think you can handle that?
Of course.
Yeah?
We started that process with the survey, so we closed it last Friday and broke it down yesterday into the grade span groups, and then we'll present the parts to each subgroup of administrators, because it's a combination of information for districts and schools, and then work through TAC with it. And we are going to have a quarterly survey that we go through and reach that feedback. So we've got a lot of great information about time and those kinds of things, and trying to find the balance of what's legislatively required for us that we have less control over, so.
And if it takes, you know, some of these things, if it does take extra people to help the schools, that's what we need to consider, rather than it's just saying, well, I'm sorry, you just still got to do this.
Right.
So.
And the at-risk plans start really young, I mean, and what is the?
They start in elementary school, but it's not just the at-risk plans, though. We have like the IST, and then there's always, you know what I mean, there's always something else. So it's not just those. I mean, there's so many other forms that we are filling out.
IEPs and, yeah.
Teachers are responsible for forty or fifty of those.
We don't do the IEP paperwork, but teachers have to go to the IEP meetings. So then you're also having to use your planning time for that, which is important, and it's only one teacher going to that. But when you have a high population, you know, of exceptional children, students, you're at those meetings quite frequently, and I'm a co-teacher. I have a co-teacher, obviously, and she's our EC department chair, and so I feel more comfortable going to them, because I see, you know, those students in the interaction. And so, you know, I get pulled to those quite frequently, which is fine, but it's just something else, which is important. I'm not saying it's not important, but we're missing the planning and the lesson planning piece of planning. Planning is to plan, and we're not planning.
Yeah, by the time you guys go to a grade level meeting and a PLC and an EC meeting and all that, your week is eaten up.
Exactly.
And you have no planning time.
Yes. And the EC chairs, you know, they are also co-teachers, so they're in the classroom. So, you know, they have to do a lot of extra paperwork as well. So it's, I'm not sure how to help alleviate even their stress. I mean, that's a lot of, you know, of feedback I'm getting is, you know, our EC department needs support. I don't want to say that, but I don't know. It's just a lot.
Well, our intent is to quit doing lip service to this and do something about it, so.
And I appreciate.
Appreciate your help with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a couple more things that I just wanted to talk about, which kind of leads me into the next one, is we really need to figure out how to retain highly qualified teachers and veteran teachers. They're leaving our district, and we've got to figure out how to do that. I don't know if it's with another supplement increase, I don't know if it's with an added bonus. We are, we have to be competitive with the surrounding counties. And I'm not talking about just the ones in North Carolina, but South Carolina pays higher as well, and that's a state thing. But still, we've got to start competing to keep good, highly qualified teachers here. We don't just need a body in a classroom. We need a teacher that is qualified. If they're not qualified, then our students aren't getting their best education. And I think that's our top priority as a county, is to provide the best education to our students possible. So we've got to retain highly qualified teachers and keep our veteran teachers here. Also, mental health days are needed for teachers and students. I know that's, I think, going to be discussed, or has already been discussed, I'm not going to talk about that too much. And then substitutes. I know we've done some work on that, but it's still an additional thing we've really got to work on. We're still covering classes, and I appreciate that we're being paid for that. But again, when we cover classes, it's during our planning time. So what's more important, to cover a class or to plan? So we really need substitutes in our buildings. So I don't know if we can offer more financial incentives, if we can recruit, I don't know if we can get a commercial and put it on ATMC. I mean, we've got to make it so people come in and want to sub in our county. It's a great county to be in, you know? And I don't, I don't know if they're fearful of schools, I don't know, but we need to show them that our schools are welcoming, that we need them, that we appreciate them, that we have great students, and we've got great teachers to support them when they're in that building. But we need to show that somehow. And then also, counselors, we need counselors. We have four hundred, I'm sorry, how many students? Four hundred and sixty-one students, and we have one counselor. The national average, or the national recommendation is one to two hundred and fifty students. The North Carolina average is one to three hundred and fifty students. Brunswick County is one to six hundred students. Especially in a year like now, especially with COVID last year, mental health is really a priority right now. So when we have one counselor to six hundred, it's a lot for one, one counselor. Our counselor, I mean, she's running in all directions. And the same thing with her. Does she meet the needs of our students, or does she get caught up on her paperwork? What's more important? The needs of our students, but then she has deadlines as well. So we really need to look at that number. One to six hundred is not equitable, like, that's not fair for her or for any of these counselors. So we really need to look at that. We have a two hundred and fifty national recommendation, and then a three hundred and fifty-three state recommendation, and we're at six hundred. That doesn't balance out. So we really need to look at that as well. But that is all I have. Thank you for listening, and thank you for the great questions. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
I just wanted to thank you. Ms. Moffett and I walked through some middle schools last week, and we saw all the kids during intervention time at both schools on their Math 180, and we went to the little kid schools, you know, they were, so it was fantastic. They were engaged, and you could actually see on some of their portals where their progress was.
Yes.
And the kids were really excited. They're like, oh, I'm going to get through this and get my, and get caught up, and, because they look at us kind of like getting caught up.
Yeah.
And it was, it was really encouraging to see how interested the kids were in that program. It was, it was just fantastic.
Yeah, it was great. They were super engaged.
Awesome.
It was interesting to see, you know, how it all works.
Yeah, and especially with those online programs, it really shows them where they're at, like, if you're, you know, at a third grade level, but you need to get to a fifth grade level, they can see that, and they want to get to their fifth grade level, and they like that growth piece. So, Mr. Barker, we want to thank you for coming to our school. Many teachers came to me and said that they felt that you were approachable, that you were personable, and they felt that you really were listening to what they had to share with you, so they just wanted me to thank them, thank you on behalf of them.
I appreciate that. And then just to add what Mr. Benton and Ms. Moffett were saying, when I was at Charlotte and Cedar Grove, usually when we walk into classrooms, there's, you know, kids counting the holes in the tiles or sleeping, and when we walked into the rooms, your classroom and your colleagues, everybody was attentive and paying attention, and I like seeing that. So that is an attaboy to you, Mr. Hayes over there as well. You guys are doing a great job, so keep up the good work. Anything we can do to support you guys in that mission.
We appreciate that. I feel that, honestly. I feel that you guys are really trying to, you know, support your teachers, all of your staff, honestly. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, you have minutes for October fifth and October nineteenth. There's any corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Barker and a second by Ms. Moffett. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Also, we have the consent agenda, which now includes items one, two, three, five, and six. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Barker, seconded by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We're down to action items. Action item number one, resuming presentation of colors by JROTC and Mr. Barker.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I, I was approached by some citizens, and Mr. Benton and I also spoke about it. And this is really more than just bringing back the general to see to our meetings to present the colors. I would like to see our meetings open back up to more of the public again, so we can get more immunity involved in our schools. And so in addition to resuming the presentation of the colors, I would also like to see us resume the reasonable room capacity as well, so that we can open our meetings back up to normal public interaction and input.
Okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think we have to vote on that, so we'll just make those changes for the next meeting.
Since it's an action item, I think we should vote on it.
And we can make, we have a motion by Mr. Benton to approve those colors by ROTC and going back to the normal setting for the meeting. Mr. Benton makes the motion, we have a second.
Yep, second.
Mr. Robinson, second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Senate Bill 654.
Dr. Oats. Yes, in accordance with Senate Bill 624 requires a monthly vote by the boards of North Carolina to determine whether or not masks will continue to be worn. But before you do that, I have asked Mr. Harrelson from the Health Department to come and give us an update on where we are with the metrics in Brunswick County. Mr. Harrelson?
Thank you, Dr. Oats. Good evening, board members. I am happy to report that I have a, another good report for you about the COVID metrics in Brunswick County. We are continuing to trend in the positive direction. We see a downward trend in the number of cases per day. Over the last month, cases have declined sixty-seven percent to an average of twenty-eight cases a day as of today. Fifty-four percent of our cases are still in that twenty-five to sixty-four-year-old age range. In the five to seventeen-year-old age range, we're seeing about thirteen percent of our As a comparison, back in August, when the Delta variant was rampant, twenty-four percent of our cases were in children ages five to seventeen, so we're going down. As of November first, positivity rate of the, in Brunswick County, which is the percent of total tests that are positive, is six point four percent. This continues a downward trend over the last month or so. Back in October, on the eleventh, we were at thirteen point one percent. A week later, on the eighteenth, we were at nine point four percent. On the twenty-fifth, at eight point five, and now we're at six point four. So we're continuing that downward trend. As a comparison, right now, New Hanover County is at two point nine percent positivity, Columbus at eight point two, Pender at five point four, and overall, North Carolina, it's at six point four percent. Our vaccination rate in Brunswick County remains high. Sixty-two percent of our population have received at least one shot, and fifty-nine percent of the population are fully vaccinated now. The total number of individuals ages twelve to seventeen that have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine is twenty-six, twenty-six hundred and fourteen, which is thirty-six percent of that particular population. In other news, Pfizer should be receiving full approval from FDA and CDC this week for their COVID-19 vaccine for children ages five to eleven.
Any questions?
I had, I had a couple.
Okay.
Should be easy. So without contact tracing, are we, are you contact tracing every positive case, or is it just in the schools that we're doing that?
Oh, every positive case.
So every positive adult, you go into their workplace, you're finding out who's in their desks next to them, and they're all going home on ten-day quarantine?
Well, if we, we reach out to the positive individual, and we have to depend on the information that they provide to us. And so if they say, I've had absolutely no contacts, then the investigation doesn't go anywhere. But if they start naming people, then we have to call them and kind of figure out if they've been in close contact for more than fifteen minutes, et cetera.
And we could do it the same way in the schools, I assume, then? We, there's no need for us to have administrators spending half a day watching a video camera of who's exposed to who, what, when?
Right.
It would be arch, we would be able to do said, would be acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, and then the numbers, so they're looking good.
Yes, sir.
And if we went ahead and removed masks today, that wouldn't cause any undue burden to your department, or you guys wouldn't be needing any further provisions put into place in our schools?
No, sir, we should not.
So we'd be good to go. I appreciate it. I didn't, if there's, if anybody else has any questions, if not, I wanted to.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to modify the Brunswick County Schools' face cover policy to an optional use for all students, staff, and visitors effective immediately. Within this motion, it would authorize the superintendent to reinstitute the face covering policy should an individual school exceed a ten percent COVID-19 quarantine count. This motion would not supersede any federal regulations, which obviously would include the buses that are currently imposed, and would further recommend that individuals who are not yet fully vaccinated for COVID-19 wear face covers in school settings per health guidance.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Mr. Barker, second, is any other discussion?
I just have one question, is are we, and Dr. Oats might have to answer, so are we still required to do verbal screenings on all those visitors coming in every building? Like, have you been exposed to any of these symptoms? Are we?
No.
We're no longer, okay.
We're not going in.
I'm good.
Any other questions? Anything I can help you with?
Thank you, Mr. Harrelson.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'm just going to make the statement, I'm not crazy about the ten percent. But that's just, I think it should just be optional straight across the board and not worry about percents, but just making that statement.
Any other?
I think it's time we move to get the masks off these kids.
I think it's time we move to get the masks off these kids.
Yeah, I do, too.
I'm done COVID, yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
That was immediate, right?
Yes, yes, right now.
Put my glasses back on and see.
To increase the purchasing threshold, Ms. Fike?
I will be presenting her, Ms. Fike. I believe she presented this to you at committee, and so we are recommending approval of a resolution to, that authorizes the increase of the micro purchasing threshold from $10,000 to $30,000.
It's not in there. Do we have a motion to approve? Robinson?
Second.
Mr. Barger makes a motion, Mr. Benton seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Policy 6430, purchasing requirements for equipment, materials, and supplies. Ms. Cahill?
To the resolution, where there are some minor changes in the informal bidding section to make the dollars match to $30,000 for the resolution, and also lessening the number of quotes that are needed to, within this informal bidding range. With the supply issues that are going on, just people don't have time to give us the quotes that we're, that this was requiring, and so it holds, hinders us doing business.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Is this a temporary modification?
It is not. The resolution is required to, we have to recertify every year, so it'll come before the board each year.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Barger makes a motion to approve. Mr. Robinson seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes also. Use of Parks and Recreation facilities for Brunswick County, Ms. Dr. Oats?
Yes, from our, from your committee meeting last month, there was some conversation about resuming the use of facilities with Parks and Rec. After going back and looking at our existing memorandum of agreement, there's nothing in it that is, you know, out of the ordinary. Everything is the way it was, basically pre-COVID. Public is more than welcome to use our facilities through Parks and Rec as they've, as they've been done in the past. So, with that said, for an official vote from the board, I'm just recommending that we continue on now with our existing memorandum of agreement with Parks and Rec.
I move to approve that recommendation.
Second.
Mr. Robinson makes a motion to approve. Ms. Moffett seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. November 12th, Day of Reflection.
As the board is aware, there's been a movement around the state and actually around the nation for this, school districts giving the day after Veterans Day as a Day of Reflection. However, I want to make sure that we are all aware that we still have state guidelines and the law that we have to abide by as it pertains to employ, our employees, and making sure that they are paid for working. I would recommend to the board that November 12th, the change on our calendar from a student day to an optional teacher work day. That day can also be used if they, if the teachers see fit, as a day to work remotely from home. Some of the things that Ms. O'Hara spoke about tonight, in your visits to schools, and emails from teachers, and my visits, and even conversations with teachers, one of the major things they're looking for is additional time, whether it's time to work on lesson plans, whether it's time to work on those at-risk plans that Ms. O'Hara spoke about. This would give at least one day that they can devote to doing those tasks that they do not have the time during the regular school day to complete. So, I am recommending November 12th, the day after Veterans Day, be designated as an undesign, be turned into an undesignated work day with the option to work from home if all employees so choose.
Dr. Oats, that loss of a student day, that still keeps us within the hours of instruction requirement?
That is correct. Currently, we have 10 bank, 10 bank days in our calendar, so we will be fine with the requirements.
Okay.
On the law.
Can I ask about March 18th, even though it's next semester?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, what I would like to see is, I think that might be a professional development day, to let the teachers have a work day in their classrooms, and forego professional development. Somehow work that out where, I mean, you do so much at the beginning, I would just like to see that as a work day, where you can be in your classroom, planning and collaborating with your teachers. Because it's already a work day, but it was going to be used as professional development. Maybe that would be an option.
And one thing I heard from teachers, actually, in Cedar Grove last week, was their inability to have the parent-teacher conferences now. And I think that's important, and that gentleman spoke about, you know, being active in your kid's education, and being able to have those parent-teacher conferences is important. Us as parents, of being involved in our kid's education, so I think that gives them that opportunity to have those conferences, and for the teacher and the parent to work together, because, you know, we're all part of this together, whether it's at home or in the school, so I would support that as well.
I would agree with that as well.
Is there mandatory training on that day planned, Molly?
We always have things that are required, so we will probably have to put subs in place for any teachers that need required trainings at that time, so they will not be able to be in their classroom on a particular day. I think probably what needs to be determined, is it still a required work day or a non-required work day will be the change? If it's non-required, we can't expect conferences or anything like that, it's just.
I think she's, I think she's talking about March 18th, is that required work day?
It's a required work day currently. So, if you're requesting just us not hold any professional development that day, it can remain a required work day.
Right.
And other duties can be expected at the school level.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to avoid, was just more professional development, allow them to be in their classrooms.
That would not be a calendar change.
Okay.
That would just be a decision that you all would make, that we would follow. But I do want you to know, there are requirements that occur specifically in the world of special education with new employees and those kinds of things, that we will have to pull teachers at some point to do that and provide substitutes, which is additional expense.
Well, making that change this early would give you an opportunity of those things that have to be done arranging a different way, I would hope.
We just don't have any other, we do, we just do four PD workdays a year. We do two at the start of the school year, one for semester, one for the second semester. I believe there are nine school-based required workdays, and 13 non-required, oh, sorry, nine non-required. So, it's, the professional development is actually the least amount of our workdays.
I move to approve Dr. Oats' recommendation and Robyn's request.
Would that help you guys? I mean, are you, is that, is that an additional help?
I think, we're just, was that the first day workday right now, or is it probably extra added work? Like you said, we're going to have two PD days, this happens to be the first one, the fourth workday, and I think that must stress teachers out, because why are you giving PD another workday? What we have is a four-school start, I'm not saying it's not going to help, but I think we actually have built-in workdays next semester, correct?
Okay.
So, the reason why there aren't in the first semester is because we don't want to take any more instructional time from the high schools in the first semester. So, when we go through the calendar process, which we'll be doing very soon for next school year, we have the least amount of workdays as possible with that one built-in for any required trainings that come up, and that did happen this year, that we had required trainings that occurred after the start of the school year. And so, we have that time built in, and in the second semester, there are more workdays built in because that semester is longer in instructional days. So, it really is, it's a consequence of a shorter first semester and needing to have more student days for high school students.
So, does this, I know we have a motion.
I would modify that.
Necessary.
To make, just authorize an administrative adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we've decided the date yet, but as long as we can give more time and find other days, I mean, Dr. Oats, you.
That's one of the things we actually discussed Monday in our cabinet meeting. We went through the calendar for next semester, looking for additional days that we could either change into optional workdays, or just change to give teachers more time. So, that's information that actually was going to update you on Friday to have. But also, in December, we have the 20th and the 21st. Those two days currently are non-required workdays. So, what I have planned to do is, in December, make those days work-from-home days for staff. It doesn't require the vote, because it's already the designated, or undesignated days from the board, we're just changing the location of the, of the work, so.
So, would, making the motion to make March 18th an administrative adjustment, would that help? Or does that not necessarily need to be done?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Because there will be days that we will look at for next semester to, to handle that.
Okay. Robyn?
So, does that help with the, the two days in December?
It's definitely on the table.
Would we be able to, can I just put that on my agenda for committee with your final recommendations, since those days are further out? We approved the one day that's on for today, a committee meeting, we get.
The other day.
You guys nail that out, because it sounds like it might be a drag on our subs as well, that we might be short.
We don't do that.
To cover, to pull these people out of classes during the week. So, if we, we'll let you guys bring us a recommendation on that at committee, and then we can move forward.
We can do that.
Yeah.
And I'll give that to Mr. Robinson to amend.
I believe the intent here is to understand that the board supports some modifications in order to accommodate plan and so forth. Mr. Chair, I'll modify that motion to approve Dr. Oats' recommendation for.
November 12th.
November the 12th, I'm sorry. I came out of information there.
And will you add on the December?
It's already.
Yeah, that'll go to committee, so just November the 12th.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll be my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Benton seconds, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Employee incentive, Dr. Oats?
Again, as Ms. O'Hara so eloquently put it in her presentation, it sounded like she was reading my mind, and I tell you, we did not need to do this. One of the things that we wanted to recommend, board, was giving all employees some type of financial incentive. We understand that many of our staff have asked for more time off, but as other districts around our state have expressed their appreciation in the one-time thank you bonuses, I would recommend to the board to discuss and hopefully approve some type of bonus tonight. These folks, our employees, are phenomenal, as you well know. They have given of themselves, worked extremely hard, and definitely want to be able to express that appreciation to them, not only by giving them additional time, but also by giving them some additional financial incentive. Again, it would be a one-time thank you bonus for all employees, for you to offer as a discussion tonight, I'll offer to you as a discussion tonight, to determine that particular amount and the disbursement of that financial incentive.
Board members, any comments?
I'd like to consider possibly doing, setting two, like splitting a payment, doing one right now, and doing one before spring break as well. It gives the teachers that little extra money at both breaks, so they can possibly do something. I was thinking maybe, maybe $1,000 for Christmas, for holiday break, and, or thank you, and then maybe $500 for the spring break.
I have a couple questions. Mr. Barger, I saw you waiting first, go ahead.
I, I would just hate to split it up. I think, I think if we're going to give anybody any money, they need it now. I know we're all feeling, you know, the price pension on us right now at the pump, at the grocery store, everywhere else, so I think if we're going to do it, the need is now.
Ms. Dr. Oats, what, what is the recommendation presently that you have?
My recommendation would be $1,500.
Okay. And what, does this include all staff, part-time?
It does.
Okay. Regardless of hours?
Well, with that, it includes all employees, but I think it would be prorated for part-time staff.
Okay. I just want to clarify that, because the last time we did a bonus.
Correct.
There was some misunderstanding, or with regard to that. And I know, from the taxpayer's perspective, there's always concerns when we're utilizing money. But I, I do agree with you, these folks have, have worked this year under very extenuating circumstances, and I too agree with Mr. Barger, that I believe this needs to be all at once if we're going to do something. And, correct me if I'm wrong, has, hasn't the Christmas bonus been eliminated for the past two years?
It has.
Okay. That's all I need to know. I support it.
More than that. That's actually been more than just two years.
Okay.
The Christmas bonus situation, when I went on the board in 16, it had already been eliminated.
That's right.
Because it came up at that point, so it's been a while.
Okay, I move to approve Dr. Oats' recommendation.
Ms. Cahill, would it, does it matter how we distribute it, like, all at once, or halved, or how would that work? Does it matter?
If the board authorizes $1,500, there is $2.4 million, which is what the anticipated cost would be, that is available with our ESAR funds. We would need to change our plans, admit for a change, and use ESAR dollars to fund that, and that money is available.
I think she was asking for tax implications.
Tax implications.
If they got a lump sum.
Does it matter, does it make a difference?
Would they get more money if we split it among the two tax years by splitting it in half?
Whatever year you receive it, is when you're going to pay the tax.
Haven't been in that situation before, you're, you're chopped either way.
Yeah. Six of one, half a dozen of the other.
So, is two checks possible, an incentive check and a regular pay?
It can be done, we recommend it be with their normal check.
Isn't that a tax break, though, if we split it?
At the end of the month, the system is going to add up both checks, and whichever check you get later gets taxed or withheld more heavily, so it's almost a disservice to the employee because they get more, if you give the bonus check first, very little taxes are withheld, but then they get their regular check in the same month, and then the system will aggregate, you know, both payments, and say, oops, we didn't collect enough overall for what they got for this month, and they'll take more out for the, for the monthly check. So, it is really more advantageous for the employee to receive it in the same check. It'll be a different line in their December paycheck. The, if approved, the semi-mosley staff, the 10-month classified folks, they would get theirs on, I have it here, September, December 15th, and the rest of the staff that get paid monthly would get, receive it with their regular December 21st check.
I say this to everyone.
Yeah, whichever's more advantageous, that's how we need to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would yield to finance expertise there.
So, after this discussion, do we have a motion?
I made a motion.
I second it.
And repeat your motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Dr. Oats' recommendation as presented with a $1,500 Christmas bonus.
Okay. And Ms. Moffett, you seconded?
I do, I want to clarify that it's an employee incentive, not a Christmas bonus.
Dr. Oats, language, could you restate the language?
The, just the employee incentive.
Absolutely, I'll make sure, modify that motion if it's any different.
Okay. So, Mr. Robinson makes a motion, a motion, and Ms. Moffett, you seconded?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number eight is policy, second reading on student dress and appearance. Ms. Barber?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to pull that for a slight modification to it. After speaking with our school resource officer staff, Tori, can you pull it up on our screens? After speaking with our school resource officer staff, it was brought to my attention that the headgear section potentially could cause a problem for identifying students if there was any kind of crime, or policy violation, or assaults, or anything like that. So, I would just like to see the, under headgear, so Section E here in front of us, if we just add the verbiage that headgear should be nothing that conceals the face or identity. I think that would alleviate those issues there, so I would just like to see that modification And then my motion would be to approve the policy with that change.
I second that.
You want to waive the first reading of the new policy, and of the policy and approve on the second reading now? Because we'd have to reread it, if it changes, we have to reread it with a first reading again unless we waive the first reading, correct? Because you have to read it twice, I believe, procedurally, so, may I make the motion?
Sure.
I think we should approve the policy with amendment and waive the first reading.
Second.
Do we have a second? All right, Mr. Benton makes a motion to approve the policy minor change. Mr. Barber seconds, any other discussion?
I would just add that, this will be out for another 30 days, correct? That if there's any additional parent comment on this, this would be the. So, you're waiving it, okay, so.
So, this is effective immediately, too?
It is.
So, we're not going to leave it out, okay. I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Dr. Oats?
Just one athletic announcement, and that is just congratulating our additional high school football teams for going into the first round of the playoffs. Of course, West Brunswick will be traveling away to compete against 71st, I think it is, and we will have on Friday, North and South. is, and we will have on Friday, North and South Brunswick High Schools competing at North. As you discussed in your committee meeting, the need for some additional bleachers. We have definitely addressed that issue. We anticipate a very large crowd on Friday at North. We have partnered again, of course, with our Parks and Recs Department to ensure that we will have well over 500 additional bleacher sections placed into the field at North Brunswick High School to accommodate the expected crowd. I know the operations team has worked closely with Dr. Sullivan and the AD there, Mr. McIntosh, and they've been communicating with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association to ensure that all requirements have been met to basically, to hold that playoff event. So when in talking with Mr. Larry Smith this afternoon, they will begin moving bleachers about 7:30 tomorrow morning to accommodate Friday night. So we're looking for a fun-filled event on Friday.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Oats. I got a text message on Saturday, once the schedule came out, from North Brunswick High School, and I forwarded that message to you and emailed you, and I believe yesterday you had already rectified that with your staff. So I just want to thank you and your staff for making quick action of accommodating that extra seating at that stadium. And also, I think we have some other student athletes who also made it to states. I know South had a female tennis player, Sarah Subak, made it to states last weekend and other state representatives as well. So I just want to recognize all of our athletes for doing a great job in such a stressful and tough year this year, so.
As a reminder, Ms. Board, I believe the next committee meeting is the 23rd?
Next committee meeting is the 24th of November.
And I do want to remind the board, if you would, before going to closed sessions, if you will meet with one of those gentlemen there and field their question for them, we'd appreciate that.
Mr. Lemon, I want to add to Mr. Barber's comment as well. Congratulations to all these athletes, fine job into the playoff, folks. Dr. Oats, I understand Friday, possibly, Mr. Barber, there was a meeting out at North Brunswick with some citizens to talk about the bleacher situation. Are we still working on a long-range solution to that?
Yes.
Okay.
That is certain. It is, we don't want to have to continue to move bleachers, so.
Exactly. I'm still having the parents reach out, and I was happy to come up Friday, I was not able to do so, but I know, Steve, were you able to attend that? Somebody attended that on our behalf.
Mr. Barber went.
Yeah, I went and walked the North Athletic Facilities with the athletic director there, the couple Booster Club members, Dr. Sullivan was there, and we talked about just some needs they had up there. And the basis of the conversation was the bleachers that Ms. Moffett had brought up. And I believe Sue, Dr. Oats and his staff are already working on a permanent fix to that.
So we're making a good headway there.
Yeah, we couldn't affect that change prior to this playoff game, so the mobile bleacher trailers, I believe, are what we are utilizing our partnership with Parks and Rec for.
Absolutely. And I did want to mention that the reason the seating capacities are different at South, West, and North is because back in the day when the bleachers were installed, North Brunswick was about half the size it is today. So it is time to rectify that situation and get North back up to the speed that they need at this time, so. At this time, entertain a motion to go to closed session. So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Robinson. Everybody in approval, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.